It is six P M. And the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. At this point, Mr. Jean. We're out of power. Uh, Mr. Jean Emerson Pastor New Beginnings Fellowship will lead us in our invitation.
Would you join me as we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you, Father, for this city that we live in. We thank you, Father, for the goodness that you've shown us and the blessing that's been upon us. We thank you for our, our city officials and those that govern over us. And we just ask, Father, that you would inspire and, and that you would instruct and that you would have your way with our meeting tonight. We ask you, Lord, that you would come join us in this place and that you would inhabit with your presence and that you would bring peace and joy and blessing upon our city and the decisions that are made tonight. We thank you, Father, for these things. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
We have a special guest tonight, Ms. Emma Taylor. She's a first grader at Terrell Elementary. Her favorite subject in school is reading. She loves arts and crafts and a very good artist. You will lead us in our pledge, please.
United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am in Texas. I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much, Emma. At this point in our, in our meeting, citizens may speak on actions on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when a specific hearing starts. And we have just one card. Okay, thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by councilperson, um, mine went blank.
Adams.
Adams, seconded by Councilman Greenlee. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Public hearings. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and receive testimony from the code compliance manager on unsafe conditions posted structure at eleven twenty-six West Texas and takes action, Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, the council.
It's odd sitting here too.
That was a mouthful, yeah, for sure. On October fifth, twenty twenty, Wayne Weaver Wilbur and Wayne Wilbur were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at eleven twenty-six West Texas. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter thirteen, article seven, section thirteen, one fifty-four H, M and N of the Denison Code ordinances. Co-compliance received multiple complaints from neighboring property owners regarding the condition of this property. The appraised value of the improvement was forty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars in twenty twenty. Taxes are current. There has been no water service since May twentieth of this year. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. The exterior grounds, as you can see from the picture, are a health hazard due to the accumulation of rubbish on the property. A record of the violations, notices and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the co-compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this item, they can come forward now. Being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions for Mr. Lay? Discussion? Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to declare the structure at eleven twenty-six West Texas a nuisance and unsafe, order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Hander, seconded by Councilman Crowley, does a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Public hearing four B. Receive report, hold discussion, conduct public hearing and take action on an ordinance annexing property as requested by the owner, presently located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Denison, Texas, providing for admitting to office city map, providing for municipal services requiring filing of the ordinance with the county clerk, Mr. Medina.
Good evening. This item here is case number twenty twenty dash zero eight seven A. The applicant is requesting to be annexed into the city of Denison. The annexation after this item will be followed by a multifamily rezone. The applicant's requesting to be annexed in order to move forward with a multifamily development. All property owners within two hundred feet have been notified. City staff recommends approval. This is the subject property here. It's the point eight five acres to the north. It's that triangular piece on twenty-one oh one Knight Road. This is an aerial of the subject property. The piece that is below the blue triangle is actually already in city limits. So to move forward with the proposed multifamily development, the, the piece in question will need to be annexed into city limits as well as platted and rezoned as well. During that process, our team will review utility access, site plan, all, all the other civil engineering plans, everything else that comes along with the development. The first step is, is simply bringing that piece into city limits so we can service them. This is a very preliminary and early drawing of the site plan. Chatting with the developer before the meeting and, and prior to today, they're actually looking at relocating building five south closer to Knight Road, as you can see Knight Road's over on the left. This is just a preliminary site plan. Our team will work with, will continue to work with the developer to make sure that landscaping, screening, setbacks, all of the standard requirements that you come to expect from your development are still being met. So we do anticipate this to change. However, we don't anticipate the density really changing from a maximum of about thirty units. And I can get more into the, to actual use with the next item, which is the rezone. So we do recommend approval and I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, uh, may come forward now. I have a card for Mr. Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Fred Stevens. Uh, my wife Becky Stevens and I own the property west adjacent to the property in question. Our twenty-one sixty-nine is our address on the tax rolls. So we're just west to the adjacent property in question. At this time, sir, councilmen and women, um, we're really not opposed to this, but we have a lot of questions and, um, we're interested. Uh, I talked to the developer, Mr. Shibley, I believe, and he seemed real, um, agreeable to our concerns about changing the layout. Uh, we're particularly concerned about a privacy fence. My wife and I have lived at that property for twenty years. We purchased that property. Well, we owe the lien holder, so it's not entirely ours yet, but, uh, for twenty years we've been paying on it. Uh, we bought it hoping to retire. We're closing in on that time in our lives and, um, we like it to be peaceful and quiet and we have some concerns about that. I understand that the plat is a preliminary plat and that the final plat hasn't been shown yet. As property owners adjacent to that, will we be able to see that at some point in time and have comments regarding that?
Mr. Medina, could you answer that question, please?
Yeah, so with the replat, it will be noticed again within two hundred feet. I haven't looked at the legal description of this property in, in a few days. Now, if this property has not been platted, then the preliminary plat will still go through the planning and zoning commission for approval. And I have your contact, so even if we don't mail property which is within two hundred feet, more than happy to include you on the list if you call or, or however you like.
Um, also, sir, we're, um, concerned about the drainage off the property at twenty-one oh one Knight Road. There is a, um, low area that drains directly into our property. Um, we're, we have concerns about the drainage specifically of, um, you know, there's gonna be a lot of concrete. We assume there's gonna be a road. There's gotta be parking. So how is that gonna be addressed and how is that gonna affect our property?
Uh, Mr. Medina, want, want the property owners adjacent to all the, all this, uh, construction be advised as to any drainage, parking and all that kind of situation? I, I get a nod from the back that says yes.
So for the, the drainage, whenever the developer is ready to move forward with their civil engineering plans, we'll take a look at their drainage plan. We have to verify that they will not increase the flow prior to what's currently there now. It's state law. So they, they wouldn't be allowed to drain on and if, onto your property. And if it looks like they would, we would require that they do some sort of detention, detention pond, if that's the case. Now, if, if the road is gonna be constructed or, or it is gonna be upgraded, then, you know, I'll talk with our team here to find a way, city staff wise, to try and notify the public around, whether it's through social media or whatever other avenues you might have.
Okay. So, answered your question, Mr. Stevens?
It does, yes, sir. Thank you.
Take your time.
Well, no, at this, it, it's kinda hard to have, to know what to say when you don't know what's gonna be built or how it's gonna be laid out or how close it's gonna be to your property. As Mr. Shibley was saying at one point, that they were not disinclined to realign their structures according to, if I misspeaking, sir, just tell me I- Thank you, sir. Um, based on where he didn't know we lived at the time. Uh, he was, I guess he was familiar with the property, but he thought we lived on a different part of the property. And, um, his property line on the north side is literally five feet from our carport. So we were particularly concerned about how many structures were gonna be on the north side of his property and how close they would be to our property. And again, th- this is more of me asking questions as opposed to me having something particular to say because I don't really know what's gonna be built just yet. Uh, I know what they're planning and I know what they hope to do, but where it's gonna be in relation to our property, how close it's gonna be in relation to our property, whether or not we're gonna be able to get a privacy fence or the drainage, as we, as I spoke of earlier, these are all concerns that we have.
Hopefully we'll keep you informed with everything that you guys are gonna be doing on that piece of property.
And then lastly, sir, i- is there a timeframe that, we haven't been informed of any kind of timeframe when you're gonna start or when you anticipate being finished? Does anybody know?
Do, Mr. Medina, have we given any timeframe for that?
Yes, so pending the, the annexation and the rezoning from, once we receive the site plan and the plat and the civils, it'll take about a month, maybe four to six weeks to wrap all that up and get it, get it ready for planning and zoning commission for approval.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's pending if the developer is ready to go and has their plans. You know, that, that could take some time for their engineer to draw those up.
Historically, these things all happen over time.
Understood.
Okay, anything else?
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, again, this is a public hearing. Does anybody else have anything to say about this particular item? Yes, sir. If you would state your name and your address for the record, please.
I apologize. My name is Brian Shibley and I live in Dallas and I'm a partner in the development. I just wanted to verify what I talked to Mr. Stevens about and that when we designed that preliminary plat you saw, we believed his home was opposite the open space. And he, we, he was generous enough to, we went and met with him after the P and Z meeting and walked the property with him. And now we understand we did not resubmit a, a new preliminary plan yet, but we have intentions to, to move the one building that is next to his property into the center zone. Cause we designed that thinking that we were trying to be good to our neighbors and realized that we didn't know where he was. And I apologize for that. And the, and we've, and when I was nodding my head about drainage, we're well aware that we cannot drain. Mr. Medina, you said we would not drain onto his property. That's not correct. We can drain what is currently draining there, the same pathways, but we have to retain it. And our plan would be in that same open space would be to put a pond and a retention pond in that area, but we can't increase the flow of water. We can't increase or the amount of water or the, or the velocity of water that currently flows over the neighboring properties. But what currently drains that way, we would continue to be able to drain across their property, but not in, in excess in both volume and in velocity. So that would be the ones, I just wanted to stipulate that we're not misleading anybody that there's no water going to be draining onto that property. But we will retain it and we will not, it will not create in, any more aggravation than is currently experienced under the, under the current situation. That is our commitment and that's also the, the Texas law. So that's how, that what we would follow. So I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, our intention is to do that. And after meeting with Mr. Stevens and his wife, we said, we're happy to move it. It makes sense. Our original plan was to put the pond back there and we shifted it thinking we were being a good neighbor, not to aggravate him. So.
Mr. Stevens, do you understand all what he just said?
I did, sir.
Okay.
Who decides how much water is draining onto our property and who makes the decision as to how much is too much and what the flow was? Where does that information come from?
The civil, the civil engineers will, will do that and they, they can go back and historically look at it based upon it. And you're basically, the calculation is what is currently what they call pervious versus impervious as you correctly there. Concrete and roofs are not in, are impervious, so they increase the flow and, and they can calculate that volume of water and say, we have to be able to retain that. And the traditional way of doing is you create a pond and you have a, a certain size opening. And so the water fills up and it can only drain out as fast as that opening allows it to drain out. And that's why you have to have excess. So the pond isn't always kept full up to that level. It's kept full less and then it has the ability to expand. And then as it expands up, the overflow and the excess water then can drain out at, at, at an agreed upon rate, which cannot exceed what's currently, it, uh, takes over your property. From the elevation drawings that we have and the, the topographical surveys, they can determine exactly what the current flow is and we can, you know, redirect that. And again, you know, I'm, we're trying to, and we, we will sit down and talk to you about it and where it's gonna flow and see what works best for you and make sure that you know your property much better than we do. And if you say, well, I know currently drains here, can you move it eight feet this way? Cause that would be better for us and or, you know, we're happy to help you and do all that type of stuff with you. We're not trying to be bad neighbors. We're trying to be good neighbors. And screening, you know, again, the city's gonna require it and we're prepared to do that as well. So I just wanted to, I, I apologize for not asking to speak, but when all those comments came up, I just wanted to verify that the, the approach that we're trying to take with this.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Medina? Discussion? A motion? Uh, so sorry. Close the public meeting. Meeting, public meeting is closed.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, is your property in the city limits?
Sir, a portion of it is, much like the property in question, twenty-one oh one Knight Road. There's-
The south, that south portion's in the city limits, I guess.
The portion, the south part of our property that's adjacent to Knight Road, there is a piece of that along Knight Road that's considered to be within the city limits. The vast majority of our almost seventeen acres is not inside the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Any other questions? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to recommend approval of annexation of the zero point eight five acres more or less located at twenty-one oh one Knight Road, Denison, Texas, and describe as G dash oh seven eight one, Manning J, M A dash G oh seven eight one.
Second.
We got a motion from councilperson Adams and second from Councilman Hander. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item four C, receive report, hold discussion, conduct public hearing, take action on an ordinance regarding initial zoning and rezoning of two point zero acres more or less located at twenty-one oh one Knight Road, Denison, Texas. Mr. Medina?
Thank you again. This is case number twenty twenty dash zero eight seven Z. So this is kinda the second part from the previous item. Previous item was annexation. This component is the zoning. The applicant is pursuing the development of approximately thirty unit multifamily development. The applicant is requesting the twenty, twenty-one oh one Knight Road be rezoned from commercial to multifamily two, as well as that piece that was just annexed to be zoned multifamily two, therefore creating the whole site as one cohesive multifamily zoning. All property owners within two hundred feet have been notified. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I, I did just receive an update a couple of minutes ago that our recommendation is that we do continue to hold a public hearing, however, that we table the meeting due to a, or table the action due to our requirement in our ordinance. Requirement states that if more than twenty percent of the total square feet of adjacent property owners that have been notified, um, voice opposition or in opposition to the project, that we would require a, a three, three-fourths vote. Yes, a three-fourths vote. Given that we wouldn't have that quorum here today, we do recommend that we table it. So that way at our next meeting, we can have an opportunity to get that approved if, if that's the will of the council. So here is the subject property. The whole piece is outlined in yellow. Here's the zoning. So as you can see, the triangular piece that is currently not colored in, uh, that's what we're requesting to be zoned to multifamily two. The piece that's purple, that's what we're also requesting to be zoned multifamily two. Again, here's that rendering and that preliminary drawing. I'm present for any questions that you may have. And again, we recommend tabling this item.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, uh, sorry for the, for that last minute thing. Julie was over here digging into the code. We wanted to make sure that, uh, we did this right. So, um, it does require a three-fourths vote. Since we only have five council members here, even if it were unanimous, that wouldn't be three-fourths of the council voting in favor. Is that right, Julie?
There it is. It is, although I haven't, I haven't seen the protest and, um, if it's all from, um, the gentleman that was speaking earlier, I don't know that as property that's outside the city limits is gonna count towards the twenty percent. But we can still table it and then before the next meeting, we can be sure, um, how many votes it takes.
So there's no action taken on this particular item, correct?
Only to close the public hearing.
Okay. Well, I haven't opened it yet, so.
Oh, okay.
This is a public item. Uh, anyone wishing to speak to this item can come forward and give your name and address, please.
Not, not to be pedantic, um, but Mr. Stevens basically said he didn't object to, to what we're doing. Am I misquoting you? I know you're not super in favor, but you didn't lodge an objection, so I don't understand why there's an objection and why you can't act on this.
Does it make a difference on twenty, twenty twenty-one Knight Road and I am?
Are you objecting?
No, no, I'm not objecting.
That, that was my point. I didn't, he specifically said, I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I just want some clarifications and I, I'm not, not that I'm concerned at tabling it, but I just was wanting, just as a point of order. I don't think that there's an objection that's actually on the table unless Mr. Stevens would like to stand up and, 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 and say that it is.
There, when the notices are mailed to, uh, um, the property owners within two hundred feet, it includes a card that they can fill out and mail back that says whether they're opposed or they object.
Okay, I apologize.
And a, a, a card was received, um, noting objection.
Then I apologize. I'm, I'm out of line. I apologize. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak to this public item? Being none, the public hearing is now closed and there will be no action taken on this item tonight.
Um, we would recommend that you just table it as the action until the next council meeting.
We don't have to vote on that, correct?
We do.
I will. I'll move to table this item until-
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion by Councilman Crowley to table this item till next meeting, seconded by Councilman Greenlee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Uh, item four, item five. Item for individual consideration, receive report, hold discussion, take action on ordinance, submitting chapter five buildings and building regulations. Ms. Floyd?
Good evening, council. How are you doing tonight? Good to see you. Let me see if I can figure this out. Okay. Tonight we're here to discuss, uh, adopting the two thousand eighteen international codes, upgrading our two thousand and twelve. These are the actual codes that we're seeking approval on for adoption. Um, all of these are in the international code family with the, with the exception of the twenty twenty National Electrical Code. It's in the NFPA family, the National Fire Protection Association. But the state adopts the current version of that every three years. And so this one was adopted in September, September for that. Uh, staff held a meeting with a group of builders in the community in July and told them that we were uh, looking to go this route to change our codes and what kinda information could we get them? So they wanted some information on the code changes, s- specific changes. So we got that together for them, sent it to them, and then in August had another meeting with them and went over the code changes that they had. And they'd also done a lot of their own research, bought a couple of code books. So they were, they were very well informed. It was a, a really good meeting. And they are definitely in favor of moving forward with the code adoption. And in September, uh, we had a meeting with our building boards that appealed, discussed with them the code changes and that we'd had the meeting with the builders as well. And they fully supported moving forward as well. So that's what, uh, we're seeking tonight is for approval on that. Um, I did want to just give you some updated information on online permitting. If, if you wanna go for, with that now or, and then we'll just, you can make, okay. So as you know, when, uh, we, when COVID hit in March, we started doing online permitting only. Uh, in the beginning, it was a little rough, but things are going much better now. Uh, this is our, a screenshot of our building page. And so when you can see where it's highlighted for the online permitting and the online portal. This is where the contractors go to register as a contractor and apply for a permit is at our online per, portal. If you'll look at the bottom of the page, there's also a Magov user guide, which is Magov is a software that we use. Uh, this is a step-by-step guide how to register as a contractor and also how to apply for a permit. It has pictures and arrows. It's, it's very informative. Uh, we have our, our calls have reduced significantly on how to do this because of this guide. And we currently have probably- And we currently have probably eighty percent of our contractors applying online now. So all contractors that are new house builders or new commercial, they all apply online. We still have to offer assistance with our plumbing, electrical and HVAC personnel. A lot of them work on their own and they, they don't have any office help, anything like that, so they come in. But once they are a registered contractor, this is their actual page in MyGov where they can go to. And this is where they can do all of their, see everything that they do, all of their projects. They can request their inspections online. They don't have to call us. They can see any inspection that we've done, any comments that we've made. And they can tell when their permits are going to expire, if their inspection passed or failed. So this is where they can find out everything. So, so we really think that everything is going really well with, with online permitting and inspections. We're going to, we, we are going to start trying to push a little harder for them doing their inspections online. It's the same place that they, they do everything else. So a lot of them are making notes on their page. They'll call in their inspections and leave it on the inspection line, but then go in and on their account in MyGov and leave us a note about the inspection. So, so we're going to start kind of going over that with them more, but overall, this, this is going really well for, for all of us, for them and, and for us. So, so just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
How often is that updated, the page for the individual? Like if they call in an inspection and it's done, does it get updated the same day or next day?
Instantly. As soon as they finish the inspection, they, they put it in the, the system and it's, it updates. All the contractors get an email if, when the inspection is done and, and the inspectors pass it or fail it, an email is automatically sent. So they're, they're notified right away if they passed or failed. So.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Floyd.
Okay, thank you.
Any question, any other questions for Ms. Floyd? Discussion? Motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to further ordinance amending Chapter 5 buildings and building regulations as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Adams, seconded by Councilman Greenlee. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're going to executive session, consult with attorney on a matter in which attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas Department of Rules and Professional Conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplating litigation, the contemplated settlement of the same section 551, decimal 071, and discuss a possible purchase, exchange, lease or sell a value of real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section 551.072, it is 632, and we are at executive session.